Here we are, recording in Facebook Live, I see, wonderful. So, good evening, and I'd like to welcome you and call to order the March 23rd, Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. In pursuit to the governor's stay home, stay safe order, the city council will be conducting this meeting via Zoom this evening. A link to the meeting has been provided to the public, and also numbers, a phone number has been provided for those without internet access to be able to call in to our meeting. So, we, please join me now in the pledge of allegiance, since my Brandy's got the flag up. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a published agenda, and it's lengthy. One of the things I'm, I intended to pull off was my state of the city. I plan to do that at a future work study versus a long meeting like tonight. So, are there any other modifications to this evening's agenda? Councilmember Kuchardi, do you have something?
Yeah, Mayor, I would move to modify tonight's agenda by remove business number I, the approval of the supplemental agreement number two with contract number 072-18 with TR Right Away Services. Just kind of a fairly large change order. This was not in front of the finance committee, and I think having this in front of the finance committee where we can take a deeper dive with you and key staff would be great, and then bring it back here in a couple of weeks.
Is there a second to do that?
I would second that.
Okay, motion by councilmember Ash, or councilmember Kuchardi, second by councilmember Ashby to remove item I and send it to the finance committee for further vetting. Any discussion of that? Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Just a question for Mark, this doesn't impact the project in any which way, does it?
Mr. Dorsey?
No, not adversely.
Thank you, Mark. All right, Mr. Claussen, did you raise your hand?
No.
Just an edge, okay, happens to me too.
I wore the mask.
I know. All right, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Agenda has been amended. Other modifications to this evening's agenda? Prove the modified agenda, councilmember Rose Pepe?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the modified agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all kinds of seconds there. I heard councilmember Rosa Pepe and who was Cindy, was that you? No? All right, Beck, maybe it was Beck, all right. So, a motion by councilmember Rosa Pepe, and a second by councilmember Ashby to approve the agenda as modified. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the agenda has been set for this evening, and we are to our first citizen comment period, and it is, it is for any items on this evening's agenda. We have a second citizens' comment period for all other items. So, Brandy, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council this evening?
No members from the public, just an employee, Mr. Lang.
Okay. So, we will close the first citizen comment period, and maybe we'll have somebody join us later. I know that we're streaming this live, and as Brand, as Janine shared with us, where our last meeting got about 180 views. So, it's pretty exciting that we're reaching that many people. So, we have a consent agenda that was published. Is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Lou Corelli?
I moved to present, I mean to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry. A motion by councilmember Lou Corelli, a second by councilmember Rosa Pepe to approve the consent agenda. Mike being tongue tied is rubbing off on you, I hope nobody else catches it, so. Any discussion of those consent items this evening? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have no presentations or public hearings going to our business items. The first is the adoption of an ordinance amending the 2021-22 biennial budget salary table. Mr. Crocker, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This is item 7A, adoption of an ordinance amending the salary table, exhibit A of the 21-22 biennial budget, which identifies the personnel personnel positions of the city as well as pay ranges. By this ordinance, the city council would amend this exhibit as adopted under number ordinance number 3520 to add a new position and modify existing positions. The proposed budget amendment is intended to amend exhibit A to create one full-time, one FTE for a permit technician position, as well as reduce the permit clerk positions to two full-time equivalents. The net impact of these FTE adjustments is an additional 0.3 FTE from the originally approved budget. The intent of these adjustments is to remote a permit clerk to a permit technician position, as well as increase a permit clerk from part-time to full-time. The finance department would recommend adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Claussen?
This was to mayor, members of the council. This issue came before the city's finance committee, and the finance committee essentially approved or concurred with the recommendations, and it's now coming forward to the full council. So, with that, I would move to adopt an ordinance amending exhibit A to ordinance number 035-20, the 2021-2022 biennial budget for the city of Port Orchard.
Second. Motion by councilmember Claussen, and a second by councilmember Deener to amend the budget related to the salary table. Questions for Mr. Crocker on this?
Just a quick comment, I just want to commend Nick for getting this and then moving it forward. You know, we're seeing volumes of permits like we've never seen before, and for us to keep up with the level of services that we all want to provide our community, this is a, was a, was a big move forward. So, thanks for enabling us to continue to meet the needs of our, of our, of our community members.
Other comments or questions? Yes, we found that hope this is the, this is the most efficient way to add some bandwidth to the department without hiring additional employees. So, doing what we can. All right, you'd be voting on the budget amendment related to the salary table? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Second, item B, is the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the creation of the position of a permit technician, and this is HR manager Lund.
Good evening, so in the last budget, or last action, you approved the salary scale and the FTE status for the permit tech, and by this request and item on your agenda tonight, we're asking you to approve the general qualifications and duties for the position that is provided for you in exhibit A of this ordinance. And as Mr. Crocker explained, this is creating the position of permit technician for the community development department. The International Code Council offers training and testing, and actually certification for permit technician. So, to be elevated into this higher level position, the certification of permit technician would be a requirement. We are very fortunate in that one of our permit clerks in the department already has the certification and meets all the other minimum qualifications for the position. So, it is the department's goal, consistent with the city's hiring practices, to promote this individual to this position as soon as the position is authorized and the ordinance is published, should the council so choose. So, we're asking for council approval tonight of these general job qualifications. The full job description will be developed, and you have given the mayor the authority to approve that once you approve the general qualifications and description. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the creation of the permit technician position for the general qualifications and duties for the position.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Deener, a second by councilmember Claussen to create the permit tech job description. Questions for Ms. Lund? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, you'd be voting on the creation of the permit tech job description. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has been approved. That was actually was an ordinance. So, we're to item C, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Technical Systems Inc. for the 2021 SCADA Radio Communications Design, Radio Licensing and Implementation Project. So, this is the beginning of the Mark Dorsey Show. We've got seven items in a row that are along to Mr. Dorsey. So, Mr. Dorsey, go ahead.
Thank you, our honor councilmembers. On November 30th, 2020, the Public Works Department received results from the TSI Technical Services, Inc., radio survey feasibility study that was contracted reform for the city's SCADA system, which the SCADA is an acronym that has to do with monitoring our water and sewer systems, levels and things. Upon review of the study and confirmation by central link, that copper service lines will no longer be installed for the city's SCADA systems. Public Works staff has determined that radio communications for the city's SCADA systems needs to be implemented soon. With current and future development of lift stations, water pump stations, it's important that radio communications be designed for the public workshop, so that current and future sites will be able to establish communications with the city's SCADA system. Therefore, on March 1st, 2021, City of Port Orchard Public Works Department reviewed the 2021 MRSC consultant roster, the main category, design and planning, and subcategory telemetry SCADA for the 2021 SCADA radio communication design, radio licensing, and then the implementation project. On March 3rd, 2021, staff selected three qualified consulting firms from the roster, charter controls, quality controls corporation, and technical systems, Inc. The qualifications of the three selected firms were scored based upon established criteria by three public work staff members. Staff determined that TSI was the firm selected based upon results of the scoring spreadsheet. On March 10th, 2021, the city received a proposal from TSI in the amount of $56,700 for the 2021 SCADA radio communications design, radio licensing, and implementation project. And March 11th, public work staff successfully completed the bidder's responsibility checklist for TSI. Staff recommends adoption of resolution number 023-21, thereby approving of the proving of and authorizing the mayor to execute contract C041-21 with Technical Systems, Inc. for the 2021 SCADA radio communication design, radio licensing, and implementation project in the amount of $56,700, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Councilmember Lou Corelli?
I move to adopt resolution number 023-21, authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C041-21 with Technical Systems, Inc. for the 2021 SCADA radio communications design, radio licensing, implementation project in the amount of $56,700, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Motion by councilmember Lou Corelli, a second by councilmember Ashby. Are there any questions, Mr. Dorsey, on this matter? So, Mark, will this change our existing system out? Or is this just for new systems, adding new systems?
I think Mr. Lang can confirm or deny what I'm about to say, but this is a complete change out of our, our system.
Okay. Councilmember Rose Pepe?
So, that begs to, the question is, this is approximately 57,000, and it looks like 97 had been allocated. So, will there be some more cost next year, or is this a, is this a good deal?
Well, this is, there are other SCADA-related activities that we still need to do. So, making room, Tony, did I, did I misspeak? This is our overall conversion. This isn't just new systems. This is designing, this is designing a whole system, getting the licensing in place, and then implementing so that we go strictly to radio.
Yeah, this, this will be the first phase, switching over to radio. This part of it is the design for the shop, for the head units. That way, our remote sites can actually communicate with the SCADA system. So, this is just one piece of it, just to get us going.
So, more to come. All right, other questions for Mark or Tony?
Yeah, this is kind of like somebody saying, nobody's gonna, not gonna service your refrigerator anymore, and you gotta figure out what you're gonna do. We're doing it.
Before it quits working?
Yeah.
All right, you'd be voting on a contract to update the SCADA the SCADA system to radio communications. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. Which item D, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Field Turf USA, Inc. for the Van Zee Tennis Court Resurfacing Project through Sourcewell. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Now, the city of Port Orchard has determined that the Van Zee tennis courts need to be resurfaced. Upon verification, the city is a member of the purchasing cooperative Sourcewell, formerly known as National Joint Powers Alliance, or NJPA, which is a Minnesota public agency. On February 12th, 2021, the Public Works Department staff identified Field Turf USA, Inc. as an approved vendor services provider through Sourcewell, contract number 060518-FTU for supplying athletic surfacing with related material supplies, installation and services. On March 2nd, 2021, Field Turf USA, in conjunction with its manufacturing partner, Benyon Sports, provided a quote of $25,107, applicable tax included, for a total installation price of $27,366.63. Staff confirmed the procurement process utilized by Sourcewell for this contract that does meet the required process, procurement processes, and obtain the necessary documentation regarding procurement. On March 11th, 2021, the city's Public Works Department completed the interlocal agreement purchase checklist for Sourcewell. And then on March 15th, 2021, the city's Public Works Department completed the mandatory bidder's checklist, responsibility checklist for Field Turf USA. Staff recommends the city council approve contract number C042-21 with Field Turf USA, Inc. for the Van Zee Tennis Court Resurfacing Project for the installed amount of $27,366.63, applicable tax included, through Sourcewell contract number 060518-FTU.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve contract number C042-21 with Field Turf USA Incorporated for the Van Zee Tennis Court Resurfacing Project for the installed amount of $27,366.63, tax included, through Sourcewell contract number 060518-FTU.
Second. Motion by councilor Deener, a second by councilmember Chang. And this is a body of work that we were prepared to do last year, but this time last year, COVID hit us, and we tapped the brakes on a number of expenditures. And by the time we were comfortable with expenditures again, the, the window to do this type of work had passed. So, if I remember correctly, Tony can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we're replacing the nets and the stanchions that hold the nets up, and we're also gonna stripe the courts for pickleball. We're seeing quite a bit of pickleball play out on that, of course, so.
Yeah, we're actually, this week, we're gonna be replacing the anchors for the tennis posts before they come in and do the work. That way, we could put brand-new nets up, new posts, new surfacing. Yeah, it's gonna look great.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Tony, thanks for following through on this project. Just out of curiosity, how long will the courts be down?
Uh, I haven't got that from the contractor. I presume probably for close to a week, at the most, hopefully.
Great, thanks.
When all this is done too, I tend, we've got a couple of benches sold out the waterfront, and one of them is replacing a bench that isn't a memorial bench. So, I plan to repurpose that bench, perfectly good bench that's there, and take it to Van Zee. I see people quite often using folding chairs out at Van Zee, so some benches there could, I think will be well-used. Councilmember Deener?
So, this also reflects requests where we had a pickleball group come to the land use committee some, a couple, probably about three, maybe more years ago now, asking that we acknowledge pickleball as a growing sport, and we have seen quite a few people out there playing pickleball. How does six pickleball courts mesh with two tennis courts?
They can play sideways on each side of the court, so you can have four that way. And then you can also play with the normal net the other way. So, it's, so it's actually striped for six if they wanted to.
And if they wanted to play their own way, they gotta bring their own nets, like we're saying.
That's correct.
Lots of lines to keep track of. Other questions? All right, you'd be voting on the approving a contract with Field Turf USC, USA for the Van Zee Tennis Court Resurfacing Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. We're to item E, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Katie Isaacson and Associates for the 2021 Utility Financial Program Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The city has identified the need for a 2021 update of the city's utility financial program, including an update of the Water Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, updating the Water Capital Facilities Charge, CFC, to match the CIP. Lot of acronyms, but I did spell them out, and make associated amendments to the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Accordingly, on February 11th, 2021, in pursuit to RCDW 3904155, city's Public Works Department established for this to qualified contractors from the 2021 consultant roster, remain category, financial services, and a subcategory, rate studies. And it's an attachment to the staff report. After staff developed the relevant scoring criteria and reviewed, scored and ranked the qualifications of the three consultants selected from the roster, Katie Isaacson Associates, FCS Group, and KLJ Financial Consulting. The city's Public Works Department identified Casey, Katie Isaacson and Associates as the highest ranking firm. Public Work Staff then met with Katie Isaacson and Associates to discuss, clarify, and develop the project understanding. On March 10th, 2021, the city received a defined scope of work budget and project timeline from Katie Isaacson and Associates for the project in an amount not to exceed $28,000. Staff reviewed the proposal and finds that it meets the needs of the city and the budget authorized. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution number 026-21, thereby approving contract number C038-21 with Katie Isaacson and Associates for the 2021 Utility Financial Program Project in an amount not to exceed $28,000, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Councilmember Lou Corelli?
I move to adopt resolution number 026-21, authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C038-21 with Katie Isaacson and Associates for the 2021 Utility Financial Program Project for $28,000, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Second. Motion by councilmember Lou Corelli, and a second by councilmember Deener. Questions for Mr. Dorsey on this matter? Councilor Chang?
I don't have the question so much as a comment, and I wanted to thank Mark for the scope of work. I was looking on page 106 of 171, the fourth item, where they're talking about the water and sewer rates. And I was pleased to see that it sounds like they are reevaluating the structure of the water rates, so customers could have more control over the water bill, and this could promote conservation. I know that we've had discussions about that in the past, and so I'm thankful that this is included in this scope of work.
Yeah, I was gonna point that out, that in the staff report, we didn't pick up that this is also including the water and sewer rates and associated conversations around, you know, tiers and how we bill, and, you know, we'll be going back through that process. So, it is included in the, the amount. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Memory serves me well, those are painful conversations. Everybody's got an opinion.
Yes, they are.
But necessary. All right, other questions for Mr. Dorsey or comments? All right, you'd be voting on the approving the contract with Katie Isaacson and Associates for the Utility Financial Program Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Contract has been approved. To item F, approval of the purchase of two Cornwell sewage pumps and replacement parts from Pump Tech for the Bay Street Sewer Lift Station. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. On February 16th, 2021, the Public Works Department established a list of qualified contractors from the MRSC vendor roster. Exhibit A attached, main category equipment, subcategory pumping equipment for the purchase of two Cornell sewage pumps, replacements parts, to replace the failing pumps at the Bay Street Sewer Lift Station. That's the one over there in front of Bay Ford. On February 17th, 2021, in pursuit to resolution number 019-17, section five, bid procedures, the city's Public Works Department identified four qualified vendors from the roster and sent each qualified vendor request for bids for the purchase of the two Cornell sewage pumps and repair parts. The city received the following responses from Pump Tech Owens, Seattle Pumps and Triangle Pumps. We actually didn't get responses from Seattle or Triangle in Owens. They actually didn't provide Cornell pumps, so we're down to Pump Tech. Staff confirmed that Pump Tech is a qualified vendor for the, for this purchase. This purchase relates to a city that Public Works Department project and consists of the city's procurement policies and applicable bidding requirements under state law. Budget authority is already provided for this purchase. And the city's procurement policy require council approval for this purchase as the total price exceeds $35,000 threshold. The staff recommends that the city council approve the purchase of two Cornell sewage pumps and replacement parts from Pump Tech for a total purchase of $42,973.26, applicable tax included.
Councilmember Chang?
I move to approve the purchase of two Cornell sewage pumps and replacement parts from Pump Tech, Inc. for a total purchase price of $42,973.26, including applicable, applicable sales tax.
Second. Motion by councilmember Chang, a second by councilmember Claussen. Questions or comments? Mr. Claussen?
Just a quick question, Mark. We've used Pump Tech before in previous purchases, haven't we?
Yes, we've used Pump Tech quite a bit throughout our system.
I thought, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Deener?
Our Cornell pumps still considered kind of state-of-the-art, or are we getting into stage-of-life issues?
No, I can let Tony respond, but Cornell pumps are the right pump for the, the project. We were looking at Von Chopper, but Von Chopper would have, which is, Von Chopper's the state-of-the-art, but Von Chopper would have required a complete electrical upgrade redo. So, we're gonna be able to get, deal with the clogging issues with these Cornell pumps without having to do a complete upgrade of the electrical system.
Other questions? All right, you'd be voting on the purchase of two Cornell sewage pumps and replacement parts from Pump Tech. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the purchase has been approved. We're to item G, approval of amendment number two to contract number 032-18 with BHC Consultants for the McCormick Lift Station Two Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and just to let you know, item 7G and 7H are closeout-related, closing out pump station two and closing out the well 13 project under its current form. So, on May 8th, 2021- So on May 8th, 2018, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract number C032-18 with BHC Consultants or BHC for the project's design and construction administration, construction management, support services. On March 13th, 2020, the Public Works Director authorized a time extension only through March 31st, 2021. Thereby, BHC expanded additional unanticipated budget during the final design phase. At that time, it was thought that these design modifications that were made, the project's overall budget could be managed to reduce both this construction administration services and the construction contract. Unfortunately, different additional efforts were needed in other CACM areas to accomplish the reduced construction budget and does not require additional budget authority to complete the remaining work items within the construction administration's scope of services, such as the review and finalizing of all as-built plans and the creation of the operations manual. I will point out that as anticipated, the total project cost expenditures resulted in an overall cost savings of approximately $100,000. So what that basically meant is we went over in the CACM, but it ultimately did result in saving of the overall project cost. So staff recommends authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number two to contract number C032-18 with BHC Consultants LLC for the McCormick Woods Lift Station Number 2 Project Construction Administration Construction Management Support Services in the amount of $33,500 for a total amended contract amount of $562,000 and extending the contract expiration date to May 31st, 2021. And the project itself is basically, we're in final punch list items and the system is operational. So like I said, this is a closeout.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number two to contract number C032-18 with BHC Consultants LLC for the McCormick Woods Lift Station Number 2 Project Construction Administration slash Construction Management Support Services in the amount of $33,500 for a total amended contract amount of $562,000, extended the contract expiration date to May 31st, 2021.
Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Do we have any questions for Mr. Dorsey on this matter? Nice job getting this done, guys.
Thank you.
Much needed infrastructure. Good to see us get some of the stuff done. Okay, that you'd be voting on the amendment number two to contract number 032-18 with BHC Consultants for the McCormick Lift Station 2 project. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the amendment is approved. We're to item H, approval of amendment number two to contract number 039-18 with BHC Consultants for the well 13 project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. And this is another BHC large design and construction administration project. On June 26th, 2018, the city council authorized the mayor to execute contract number C039-18 with BHC Consultants LLC for the well 13 design permitting bid support and construction administration, construction management support services. On August 18th, 2020, the city council authorized amendment one for additional CACM support services to address unforeseen changes in conditions, primarily the well drilling overruns. In January 2021, the city's public works and finance departments met with State Department of Health to seek additional DWSRF or drinking water revolving fund loan funding to help with the overall project cost overruns anticipated and learned that DOH would not be able to provide additional funding assistance because of the water rights foster delays that are impacting the State Department of Ecology. Those discussions illuminated the city's inability to bring the new well online by the end of 2021 as required under the current DWSRF agreement. As a result, the Department of Health has requested and staff agrees that the current well 13 DWSRF project must be suspended until such time as the foster water rights issues are resolved. This is accomplished by closing out the current project. Once the water rights issues are resolved, the city will then be able to apply for a new DWSRF for new funding to complete the fourth and final phase of the work. DOH, DOH fully supports this approach and plan of action. As a function of the now needed project closeout, additional work is needed by BHC to wrap up the recently completed third phase of work, which is the Maple Street and bringing the unfinished fourth phase and final phase of work to a viable point of completion. This work will allow for seamless continuation when the project resumes in the near future. BHC has provided an estimate for this work in the amount of $27,000 to successfully close out the current well 13 project or basically mothball it in the preparation for its pending restart. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute amendment number two to contract number C039-18 with BHC Consultants LLC for the well 13 project in an amount of $27,000 for a total amended contract amount of 1.282 million dollars.
There are motion. Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number two of contract number C039-18 with BHC Consultants LLC for the well number 13 project, the amount of 27,000 for a total amended contract amount of
A motion by Councilmember Deener. Was that second by Councilmember Kachari? Okay. Questions for Mr. Dorsey? Councilmember Deener?
Maybe just a little bit more about where we are with Foster.
Not where we want to be. It's in the legislature's hand right now. And this, yeah, it's causing us delays on this well, the ability to transfer water whites at 11 and it's not allowing us, the developer isn't going to move forward on well 12 out of McCormick Woods without water rights. So I would say it'd be nice if it was wrapped up by the end of the year, but we've, we've got a monthly project meeting and on our status report on it, it has to be finished before Jackie Brown retires. That's what we know.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated. So feel free to join in on a a future meeting when we talk specifically about water rights. Okay, did you vote yet?
No, no, I was attempting to answer the question. Councilmember Rosa Pepe, do you have a question?
No, so that, that impacts our ability then in the whole big scheme about solving our issue with Bremerton Water.
Absolutely.
I don't want to sound like Chicken Little, but it potentially impacts the entire state of Washington on a statewide moratorium. So this is an important, an important topic. We've even elevated at the state public works board as a lobby, as a, as a as an item for lobbyists.
Yeah, it's on our lobbyist work plan. They're helping us with this to the best of their ability. Okay, other questions for Mr. Dorsey? Okay, you'd be voting on approval of amendment number two to contract number 03918 with BHC Consultants for the well 13 project. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the amendment is approved. We pulled item I, so now we are to item J, approval of amendment number one to contract number 075-20 with Rice Fergus Miller Inc. for the 2020-2021 City Hall Improvement Project, taking it from 30% to 100% ad-ready and PSNE and bit support. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. And I would like to point out to the sergeant at arms that it's only 709. And so contrary to my reputation, I think I've gone through nine items in less than 40 minutes. So with that, I will proceed. On October 13th, 2020, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract C075-20 with Rice Fergus Miller or RFM for the 2020-2021 schematic design, 30% City Hall Improvement Project. February 16th, 2021, at the conclusion of the schematic phase, RFM presented to the city council, the Port Orchard City Hall Reskin Project. RF team, RFM team is now ready to advance the project to the 100% ad-ready, PSNE and bit support phase and has provided a scope and budget for that phase in the amount of $394,676. Please recall that on January 31st, 21, and on February 7th, 2020, the city Port Orchard Public Works Department published a request for qualifications for the 2020-2021 ad-ready 100% PSNE City Hall Improvement Project. Therefore, the city is able to directly award this next phase of work. Staff recommends authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one to contract number C075-20 with Rice Fergus Miller for the 2020-2021 City Hall Improvement Project, 30% to 100% ad-ready design and bit support in an amount of $394,676.
Or Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to contract number C075-20 with Rice Fergus Miller Inc. for the 2020-2021 City Hall Improvement Project, which will bring it to 30, from 30% to 100% ad-ready PSNE and bit support in an amount of $394,676.
Motion by Councilmember Clausen, a second by Councilmember Lucarelli. And I've already told Mark and he's communicated with Rice Fergus Miller. Their first order of business is to bring us back a mock-up of what the solar panel is going to look like. They are not going the structure at all. So those were horrible renderings and that it isn't going to look like that at all. So that's one of the first things they're going to do is actually do some actual mock-up of what it'll look like. And we'll bring that back to you guys to buy off on before we get too far into solar structure. So.
We're not going to look like Sonic Burgers.
We're not, we're not, we're not a drive-through facility. Councilmember Lucarelli?
In the project description on page 139 of the Rice Fergus Miller letter, I just wanted to double check that we are including chimes in our proposal. We have a new clock tower weatherization and we have new digital clock components, but I want to make sure that chimes are included or some sort of music projection capability.
We have the capability. We have the capability. We need the music component of that, Mark. So just make sure that that's.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't spell that out specifically, but it's part of the, it's a package with, with the, the clock tower and everything. It's, it's, it's all inclusive. So yes, it's, it's in there.
Just checking. Thank you.
She's going to hold you to that.
Minute.
Christmas comes and we don't have Christmas music. You and I are both in trouble. All right, other questions or comments?
Just a comment as a point for the sergeant of arms with action on this one. The council will have dealt with 12 items on tonight's agenda so far, so.
In under an hour.
Very, very good, counsel.
Yeah. We might get to the mayor's report before it gets dark. Who knows? It's crazy talk. Any other questions about the city hall improvements? All right, hearing none, you'd be voting on amendment to approval of amendment number one to the Rice Fergus Miller contract for the city hall improvements in ad-ready PSNE and bid support. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody oppose? Hearing none, the contract is, has been amended. Noah, you still awake? What do you have? Kim came right on. He's, he's the next item, approval of contract, of a contract with G12 Communications for a new phone system. This was yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Business of M7K is the approval of contract with G12 Communications for a phone system service. The city's current phone system has become outdated and is having maintenance issues. The city has been exploring options for phone system replacements since early 2020 in which the IT department has followed all appropriate procurement policies and procedures. And in our procurement policy, there's an exemption to standard competitive bidding process for the purchase of telecommunications systems and services. The city provided reasonable and standard procedures for technical evaluation of the proposals received. We identified the qualified sources and selection for awarding the contract. The word was made to the qualified bidder whose proposal was most advantageous to the city with price and other factors considered. And just as a side note for the full council, we did bring this topic to the finance committee and we brought our network administrator in to discuss it further. We have been test piloting several different systems. The G12 communication system we've had in pilot testing for about a month and a half now, which has gone fairly smoothly for us. And so we feel comfortable moving forward with this particular product. Although we did consider all of the vendors who submitted for the proposal. Staff would recommend approving the mayor to enter into an agreement with the G12 Communications as proposed.
Awesome.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the mayor to enter into an agreement with G12 Communications to provide a phone system and services to the city.
A motion by Councilmember Clausen, second by Councilmember Kachari. Any questions of Mr. Crocker related to the phone purchase? Go ahead, Mr. Deener.
So if I'm reading the second paragraph correctly, this will allow people to work from home without having to use their own personal cell phones, which I know is a big deal with, with work from home people.
That's correct. Yeah, under this COVID environment, we've really had to branch out in our abilities to allow people to telework. And one of the issues we ran into is people using their personal cell phones, landlines of that nature. So this will allow us to better communicate through devices like our laptops as well as city issued cell phones through an app on the phone as well as laptop. So it gives us greater flexibility for teleworking and so folks can actually use city equipment rather than their own personal.
Other questions? Councilmember Rose Pepe?
No, I know you always look at, you know, best practices. I was just wondering what other cities or companies that we benchmarked with on this.
Well, we tested one other program that didn't work well at all. Because one element of this is that there's an app on your cell phone to port your phone number to. And I don't know if you guys recall, a few months ago, I was talking to you guys and I'd have dropped calls all the time. And that was one of the products we tested and it just didn't, didn't meet our needs because it wasn't, didn't do that element. Noah, what other features did you look at?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point that the mayor raises. We, we did explore and test some other products that did not meet our needs. And in identifying G12 Communications, the city looked to a statewide agency entity called ACIS. It's a community for IT folks. And so we get to communicate with other IT departments throughout the state for cities, counties, special purpose districts. And we use this as a platform to discuss IT issues and get kind of recommendations and feedback of technologies that they've implemented, policies they've implemented. And, and so we use that network, if you will, to kind of vet out and see what other entities are doing. And so this was one of the recommendations that came out of those discussions with our ACIS partners.
Major difference here, our current my telephone system, we've got hardware in the server room that we're maintaining, that we purchased. It was 60 plus thousand dollars, you know, six or seven years ago. It's becoming antiquated and this is cloud-based and we don't, we don't possess any of the hardware. We're just leasing a, or paying for a service other than potentially buying, we can either buy or lease the actual telephones. We have a choice there. For, for those that need it, many of us can use our PCs or we're using Zoom or Microsoft Teams too, are all viable options now that existed before, but we really didn't know how to use them the way we do today. Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Okay, you'll be voting on the approval of a contract with G twelve communications for, for a new phone system. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. So I'm not going to give the state of the city address this evening. Uh, but let me jump into the next, uh, discussion item, which is the retreat agenda. We had a little sidebar at the transportation committee this evening tonight. So the draft that you guys have. Has been amended once already, adding an additional item to the policy discussions. And it's, uh, to add a, a discussion related to, uh, a sales tax measure for, for road improvements. And one of, we're getting quite a few policy items on here. And so the recommendation I am opening with. A thirty to forty five minute discussion about the organizational assessment that we did last fall. And, uh, possibly we should move that to the end of the meeting, uh, which frees up more time. Uh, for the policy side of it. And then if we run out of time, I'll take that. The, the organizational, uh, assessment discussion to a future work study. Or, or another future, a second retreat possibly if we have later in the year. So. Uh, would like to share that, have a discussion about that, but, uh, I think of all the items on the agenda, that's, that's probably the one that could wait. So other thoughts on the, the agenda? Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Um, one thing I brought up at transportation, uh, for other council members, this is very ambitious, uh, retreat. Agenda and the possibility that, uh, I asked the mayor if possibly we could go longer. Uh, he said we have a contract, but maybe we could go thirty, thirty minutes longer. Uh, my other question I had, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up to you earlier, Mayor, is that where we have the, uh, council, city council generate ideas on diversity. Equality, equity and inclusion. Also discuss about recruitment in that, in that area.
We are working to, to recruit a diverse group and I, I wouldn't be. The, you've asked not to have staff at, at, at this retreat, so I'm not going to have the HR person and, and the. In the, the details that she, that she would dive into. So.
If we do that later, then if we can move that down the road, I appreciate it.
Um, so with that, any other ideas or modifications you'd like to see? Um, yeah, on, on Jay's note there, one of the things I think that, uh, you know, we have that. Four way, the, the, the four. And I want to call the four way test, that's rotary, but remember we came up with a retreat a few years back and to have an equity and inclusion. Element to that, I think would be very important in the, the things we, we, we do. I, I think that's what it's. And the actions we do, I think it is what that was called. It's tough to say, it's on the, it's on the wall in, in the conference room upstairs. So. We haven't been there in a while. Okay, um, moving on, so I'll get that agenda modified and council committee reports economic development and tourism. Um, I'm not certain that you've met. I think your next meeting.
April twelfth, nine thirty AM.
Yep. And utilities, have you met?
April thirteenth.
Okay, it's coming up. This is going fast. Land use, did you meet?
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth. All right, and, uh. Let's see here. I ran out of my paper copy here. Festival of Chimes and Lights.
We did meet actually, and, um, it looks like this year we are going to have to be careful about crowds once again. So, um, we're planning as though we're not going to have gatherings and. The theme this year is a season of hope and joy. Um, as we round the corner of COVID and all that people have been through, we thought that that would be appropriate. Starting next year, we're going to be dealing with, um. Christmases around the world, so we're looking forward to that and incorporating some of the different traditions from many diverse cultures. Um, we also have decided that the trees downtown, when they get decorated, all of we are going to need to have lights. Uh, we noticed gaps this year and then in the lights downtown and. It's a small thing, but we think that'll make it more attractive and we have decided not to have the giving trees. Um, again, it encouraged. Quite a few trees to become giving trees that weren't and, uh, we, we think that we need to. Make it clear that the trees need to stay decorated and so, uh, we're going to be just having. Decoration contests and not asking for giving trees. So that kind of sums it up. We're working on. The details that we can make, um, again, to kind of compensate for not having the gatherings. Our next meeting will be. April nineteenth.
So from there we have, uh, finance.
Yes, we had a finance meeting on the, I believe it was the sixteenth of this month. Where we went over essentially the sales tax receipts and the. Revenue from the refunds, both of which are coming in. Uh, very good. Year to date is January, February is for. Year over year change, sales tax is up by just over sixteen percent. And in regards to, um, actual receive compared to our budget. We're up almost twenty five percent, uh, over what we budgeted for. Sales tax, REIT. Uh, kind of led the, uh, revenue sources for increases. We've had. Apparently a couple of very large acquisitions occur, uh. Early this year, so right now, year over year REIT is about a hundred and twenty eight percent. Over the same period last year and, uh. It's over about four hundred percent in what we have budgeted. So as far as the revenue side. Of course, remembering that this is only two months worth of revenue, um, it's coming in quite strong. Hopefully it'll continue to stay that way. Uh, for the remainder of the, at least the year. Uh, the rest of the things that we talked about, we talked as Noah mentioned on the, uh, resolution or the motion to approve the. Purchase of the G twelve phone system, we talked at length on that. We talked briefly about. Some changes coming forth for court security. Uh, which is an issue that we're going to have to deal with at some point as we reopen city hall, those types of issues. So. That's, uh, pretty much what we covered at the last, um. Uh, council meeting and, or excuse me, finance committee meeting and then we. With the action of taking the item off tonight's agenda, we have, I think, tentatively scheduled. Um, a finance committee for the thirtieth of March at four PM. In addition to what we already have scheduled for next month, so. Yes, that's my report.
Thank you for your report. Uh, we are to lodging tax now.
Yeah, transportation.
Transportation.
Oh, they didn't, they don't do anything. They met this evening, matter of fact.
We did, so I should be able to remember what we talked about. Um, the first thing we talked about is. The Sydney sewer project, um, the bids have come in on that and so. We should see a contract either at one of our next, um, maybe our next meeting. If not within the next couple of meetings to award the contract to get that sewer and road repaired done on Sydney. Um, we also got an update on the Bethel Lincoln Roundabout and that is on schedule. They've been out working and anyway, it's on schedule. Chris was, um. Pleased at how it's, how it's moving so far. And then we spent most of our meeting talking about the transportation improvement plan, the tip. And it is something that we look at annually and it's will be part of. Because we only update our comprehensive plan once a year, we start looking at the tip to make sure it's current. We reviewed it thoroughly, um, today and it's going back to, um, the department heads. They will fine tune it, then send it to the planning commission and then council will see it a little bit later. Um, with the rest of our comprehensive plan updates, but as we looked at the tip. And we all know from our. Oh God, what is it? The preservation, maintenance, whatever the term of that is. Our transportation needs, all of our infrastructure needs are great and. We currently, the city of Port Orchard has a transportation, uh, benefit district. And we have assessed it at twenty dollar car tab. And we have done just a little bit of, had a little conversation about what if we. Um, terminated the car tab and ask our citizens if they would like the, to do. The two tenths of a percent sales tax and, uh, we compared a little bit to date. The income that would generate for us and it was enough that it wore to this bringing that to the retreat. For full council before we have any, so that we can have further discussion and just get an idea of council's feelings on that. And our next meeting will be the fourth Tuesday of April. And we meet at five o'clock.
Thank you for your report. How about lodging tax now?
Okay, uh, we had a meeting, um, on Monday. Uh, it was one of those good news, bad news meetings. The good news being we have a very healthy, uh, lodging tax. Uh, fund, uh, currently because we have no funds going out. Uh, currently the, uh, everybody that was on the call, including Matt Murphy from the chamber. Uh, we're very understanding of the position that the council took, uh, with not accepting any special, um, event applications. Uh, I want to thank Brandy because she gave a little bit more background than what I gave, which was no. Uh, and that helped a lot. And, uh, so they're very understanding and they. Uh, would just like us to keep an open mind that should things relax, uh, that we might have festivals, uh, uh, some type of event. Uh, as the year goes on and we said we keep an open mind. That was, that's my report.
All right, um, sewer advisory.
We're looking to schedule a meeting and we'll announce it at the next meeting.
All right, and the council retreat, we talked about the dates and made some modifications to that agenda. Outside agencies, Councilmember Ashby, you have anything to report there?
You're muted.
KRCC is still moving forward with the update of our countywide planning policies. That is taking, um. A lot of time and energy from our community development directors, but we intend to. Have a draft in front of the full Kate, uh, Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council Board on May fourth, um, for review. And then it'll go out for public comment and hopefully to the county, uh, the first part in June to start the ratification process. So that's basically what we've been working on.
Hey, thank you for your report. Um, outside agency, I put agencies I participate in, uh, the Gors Coalition. The last few weeks, we've had nearly thirty Zoom meetings with senators and, uh, House representatives. A council member Clausen and representing Kitsap Transit has been there. Virtually all of them with me, so I appreciate that. Councilmember Clausen, unfortunately, the. House and Senate budgets were released today and there is not a transportation package in those budgets, unfortunately. So. Uh, more work to do on that front. Um, your thoughts? Let's see here, other. A W C, I've had a number of meetings with, from Senator Murray to, um. Derek Kilmer, uh, related to, uh, appropriations and the American Rescue Plan. And as I, I shared with you, there's sixty five billion that was, uh, is direct indirect flexible spending. To cities, um, we likely only qualify, we're gonna, we're gonna see likely. Uh, three point two million dollars in two annual installments in twenty two and twenty three. Twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three and, um. Likely sewer, sewer water infrastructures are, are about the only ways we can, we don't have lost revenue. We don't have COVID expenses, so. Um, so we'll, we'll talk some more about that. Councilmember Clausen asked that I add that on to the retreat agenda. And provided we don't have to pick a project be- before then. Um, a lot of this is happening fast and furious and all, matter of fact, last Friday at ten in the morning, I learned that. There was a transportation, uh, element application that I need, we needed to have done by Sunday. So. Uh, then they, of course, about two o'clock extended the denlight a week. So, uh, Chris, I know is working on that. Um, so we do have our capital appropriation request in for the community center and, uh. We're working on the one for the, and the only shovel ready project we have that, uh, checks the boxes is the random roundabout for Anderson Hill. So that's the one we're going to submit for that. Um, and extend, you know, extended a, a mayor's exchange today and, uh. It, uh, it, my biggest takeaway from it, while all of us are different in all these cities, it is so interesting how. So many of our issues are the same or we've done that before or we're about to do that. So I, you know. Um, they are, they are very valuable, uh, to attend and I'm, and I glad, I'm glad I went and did that today. Um, I had a great meeting with Seroptimus, uh, on Friday afternoon. And, uh, they're interested in the naming rights to one of our, uh, meeting rooms in, uh, the community center. And they wanted to know how much and I said more than a dollar and less than a million. And, uh, we'll, we'll see, we, you know, they want to have a place to meet every week and. So I kind of need to, are you guys comfortable with that concept? I think we would chart, we should charge. Look at what the annualized room rental be, would be, and then it's something more than that. And I don't know what that something more is and. Councilmember Kachardi works in that industry. And I chatted with him a little bit about this yesterday and it's probably not a percentage because. Us, a law, a small group meeting room that a percentage of that dollar amount isn't very much. Um, so I'm sorry, I don't have this idea fully baked yet because it just got sprung on me Friday, but. Um, it's, they would likely commit to ten years, uh, you know, a ten year commitment, make annual installments that would help with our. Uh, operating costs to the community center. And for that, they would have a room named after them for, for that ten year period. I don't see anybody with a freaked out look on their face, so I'm, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, Councilmember Shane.
I, I think it's good that there is, I was gonna, I was thinking that if you had an annual naming possibility, but, but I like what you. Are proposing where it's ten years as opposed to something in perpetuity because it seems that previous. Naming things have been forever and we know that that is just not the best period. So this is much more flexible. I think that's, that sounds like a good direction to go in.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, just another thought I had on that. It's just we move on again, we're a long ways from this. We're still in the midst of feasibility, but we just want to make sure that. You know, we're not treating any group unfairly if we are to, you know, dedicate certain days of the week and times of the year for. For ten years where no one else could maybe have access to those rooms or that timeframe, just so, just something to consider that there's. Equality amongst all the different user groups with, you know, fair access to dates and times.
Fair enough. Um, where am I at? Mark's got something to share and I won't steal his thunder. I, I have an obligation to report, uh, changes to job descriptions and we changed one for the summer hires. That, uh, we've, we've got posted right now and relates to just, uh, renaming the position to reflect. Uh, now it's called, uh, pub, the seasonal public works, employees and the. More accurately describing what they do, which is primarily, uh, routine parks, maintenance, cleaning. And emptying trash is, is, is primarily what they do, uh, on our park system. Um, the, the county is, um. Where am I? So the park survey. Um, I, I've heard from four of you. I, I've heard from four of you on which sign you like. Two of you like. The pop, which is Port Orchard Parks. And two of you like, imagine Port Orchard Parks. So I only plan to produce one sign. Is there? Those of you that haven't given me any directions, do you, of those two, do you have a preference? One thing that council member, when I talked to council member Clausen about this, he offered up his marketing person to look at the concepts. And maybe inform the decision, help to form and inform our decision. So is there, is there somebody that hasn't voted, want to give me their thoughts?
I didn't vote. And I would, if those were my two, I would prefer the Port Orchard Parks, the POP. The other one that has the word imagine in it, I think that ties too closely with the Imagine Port Orchard campaign that went on with the community center. That had absolutely nothing to do with the city. So I think it would be wise for us to distance ourselves from that one.
Okay.
I'm partial to pop as well.
Okay. All right. Sounds like it's pop. Okay. And then the only one I heard, you know, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 questions. That I circulated and councilmember Clausen got back to me and just wanted some examples in. The types of amenities in that open ended question. I'm told that we need to scale this down to about six questions. Do we want to discuss this tonight? Or do you guys want to dig that out of your email and, and? Give, you know. Give me your thoughts on that. So I can run through them quickly here. I think the first one is important. Which park did you visit today? And it would be a dropdown menu. Of all the different parks. So we need to eliminate probably two or three of these is what I'm getting at. Did you, how did you recreate today? What did you do at the park? And it's a, it's a free form cell. How did you enjoy your visit today? That's a scale one to five or one to 10 probably. Did you use trails or pathways? Yes or no? How important are trails and pedestrian paths to you? A scale? What is your favorite thing to do outdoors in Port Orchard? And it's, it's a, that's a free right, you know, a free form cell. What amenities or improvements to newer existing parks would you like to see? And that's also. Free form and councilmember Clausen. Thought we should give them some examples like access to the water, dog parks, trails, playground equipment type things. So that we're not getting. Things we would never consider. What else, what else should we know about our part, your parks visit? And that's a free form. And, and the lastly is, are you a resident of Port Orchard? Yes or no? And maybe we need all of those questions, but. No, councilmember Deener.
It seems like there's a couple that might be a little overlapping, perhaps even a little redundant with the dropdown and the free form. Okay. You mentioned a couple upfront. But I'd like to actually look at it and, and look at the email and provide comments as well.
Okay. I encourage you to do so. I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock with, with Josh. So if you could. Need to put that on you tonight, but tonight or in the morning, if you could look at that and get me your comments.
Do that tonight.
Councilmember Kuchardi, I'll start with you.
Yeah, two questions that jump out to me that probably aren't that important would be the third one. How much did you enjoy your visit? I think that's, I don't know how much we're going to learn from that and what we're going to do with it. Number two then would be, what's your favorite thing to do outdoors in Port Orchard? I think we'll pick up that information more specific to the parks question. So I think question number, I think that six could also probably be cut.
Okay. So what's your favorite thing to do outdoors? You think it could be renewed?
I think it could be removed. So I think we're, we're gleaning that information off of other questions.
Okay. All right. Good feedback. Councilmember Shane.
I would just suggest that each of them have examples instead of too many free form cells. Even if, even if we add the other as one of the options, I think once you let people know what sort of examples we're expecting. That might help guide the input that we get.
Thank you. Councilmember Lucarelli.
I think that what else should we know about your parks visit takes it a little too far because you've already asked what, how you recreated today and what did you do at the park? So I think that's redundant.
Okay. All right. Looks like I got it down to my six questions pretty easily. Thank you. And then I, I plan to take John up on his offer and.
Marketing person?
Yeah.
He wants to say something.
Yes, Mr. Clausen, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out the one question that you asked, or the last one, you live in Port Orchard. Then I don't think people understand where Port Orchard is. Are you talking the city of Port Orchard or Port Orchard? You know, Mile Hill, Parkwood, you know, there's a lot of Port Orchard.
Because what we're, the purpose of that question is, are we drawing people into the city that they're spending dollars? So. All right. That's, that's good. I was looking at my sheet, so.
Is, is everyone going to know that it's recreate versus recreate?
Yeah.
Maybe that should be a different verb.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. I think we beat this to death. All right. I'll move on to the rest, the other items in my mayor's report. I learned at, at the housing kits app board meeting today that Kitsap County and, and. Pauls Bow are probably on the cusp of reopening to the public. And hopefully I'm, I'm not sharing something with, to you Scott, that you haven't heard from your boss, but. And under the provisions provided for professional services. And so I came back, got to the office and I pulled, pulled those up or actually Charlie shared them with me. And there's three pages of things we need to do if we were going to do this. And 19 items, we're doing most of them, but the very first one says. Professional services are required to mandate that employees work from home when possible. And close offices to the public if possible. That's the very first criteria, which is kind of counterintuitive to. Being open to the public. And so. We also learned, I also learned today that Bainbridge Island is planning here in the next couple of weeks is opening city hall by appointment only. And I think that is probably a better model because we're serving the public. Other than a few things like fingerprinting down in the police department. Nick's department at times has developers delivering large packages that. With plan sets that want to be date stamped and then they want to walk over to the finance department and deliver a large check. Sometimes we have somebody that wants to pay utility payment or a court payment with cash. I think if we put a sign on the door and that we were controlling how many people are coming and going out of the building. So that's, I just wanted some feedback from you, but that's, I think, a better approach than just opening the doors and. Seeing what happens. I think we need to ease in back into this. So I'm seeing heads. Nodding up and down. So we're going to work on a, a, a plan here to market that and, and, and share that with the public. That I think by at least no later than the middle of April, I think we'll be open to the public by appointment only. And then from there as further restrictions are relaxed, that way we're, we'll. Then open city hall back up even farther. So I think that's a good, good step. Because I'm not certain that all employees are ready to come back into the office and be around other folks. Councilmember Deener.
What does that model sound like? Is that, oh, I got a dog bark. Sorry. What does that model sound like? Where is that where somebody from public works comes to the front door and lets somebody into me with them or?
Yes. Okay. Yeah. And then, and then we're controlling, they're not bringing five other people with them. You know, because part of the criteria in this, we're supposed to require that the person that's here for the appointment comes by themselves. Unless they've got minor children with them or something. So, you know, while we were controlling how many people are coming, going within the building and sanitizing. Areas after people have left. So, which are part of the requirements. So I think it's a. I guess good step in the right direction to provide, I, I think we're doing 95% of what we were doing before. Over the phone, the internet, you know. The finance department's done a great job with online tools and as other departments have. So I'm, I'm proud of what we're doing and how we've adapted, but. Let's, I think ease back into serving the public back in person too. With that, that is the end of my mayor's report and it's dark outside. I'm sorry. Staff reports, Mr. Dorsey, I think you got a big one. Why don't you, why don't you share that with us?
I've got a couple. One is in all seriousness, I want to thank the, the council for their continued support of the public works department and the approval of all the contracts tonight. So don't think that that does not go unnoticed over the years. It's, it's important that. The mayor and the council have faith in the public works department. We work hard to earn that and maintain that. And then on the same kind of note, I want to let you know that the Tremont Street Widening Project has won the American Public Works Association. Washington Chapter 2021 Project of the Year Award. So.
Nicely done.
They created a small agency transportation category for cities under 20,000 and. Project between five and 25 million and we are right at 23 million and we're at 15,000. So we're kind of on the upper. Upper end of that category, but I think it's well deserved. I think the, from what I'm hearing, the project is well received by. People driving other than the 19 or the one person that's had 19 accidents at South Kitsap and Tremont because he keeps pulling in front of. In front of somebody in the circle. I'm assuming it's the same person because it's the exact same thing. But other than that, I really think it's been work.
That, that and the one light fixture that everybody, as soon as we put it up, they hit knockout over on that corner.
One elected official that likes to drive 80 miles an hour, see how fast they can go through in his Mercedes. So other than that, it's all good.
Mr. Crocker.
I don't have anything for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Bond.
I just wanted to thank the council for the support in helping us get through this very busy period in DCD. So thank you for your support.
Tony Lang, you're still there. We're going to make you give a report tonight too.
I don't have anything. Thanks.
Oh, Public Works is doing a lot.
Yeah, I appreciate all the approval on everything that we're doing.
If you didn't notice, they, they rebuilt the, the gates on the, on the. Geiger side of the building down to the mechanical room. Scott Shenick showed off his woodworking skills and rebuilt those gates that had fallen apart. So. That's, that's one of the many things they've done here in the last few weeks.
Oh, and, and I saw the Vaptor truck for the first time driving through town today. That thing is pretty fancy, fancy looking.
We've had, it's getting a lot of use. That's for sure.
Clerk Reinderson.
I don't have anything to report just yet, but at the next meeting, we're going to have some website and laser fish updates.
Wow. All right. Can't wait. Chief Brown.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to give counsel an update on the navigator. She's been in place roughly a month. So when she was working under contract from Pauls Bow, she was doing about 40 referrals a month. Which was more than Bainbridge and Pauls Bow combined in the last month. If you exclude the fact that even the first 10 days, she wasn't even doing more than just onboarding. She has 68 referrals between the city of Port Orchard and the fire department. So she's doing a lot of really good work. She's also been doing a lot of outreach. We met with Rotary today. She's, she's, she's doing fantastic work. So thank you guys again for making sure that happened.
Chief Brown, what hours does she work? Is this set schedule or how does that work? Because I know there's probably more demand than she's able to meet.
Yeah. So she's, she's Monday through Friday, eight to, eight to 4:30.
She also gave a presentation to the, to POPSa. Last week, and if you went to their website, I believe you could find a video. They, they recorded that zoom meeting. So if you want to. See her give a presentation, I think it's, it's out there. And if you can't find it, let me know and I'll dig it out of my email.
Yeah. And we've actually just posted a video that Matt Murphy in the chamber did interviewing her, I believe, last week, and that is on our section of the website.
Perfect. So even better. You can find it on the city's website on the police's, police department's page. Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yep, of course.
Ms. Archer.
Nothing to add. I was going to speak to those proclamations, but you, you took care of all of that. So.
Okay. All right. We're to the good of the order. I just wanted everybody to know because I did Mark's video today and. It's Tuesdays and I'm trying to dress it up. So I put a tie on again this week. So it's tough to see unless I angle the camera down. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that I got a tie. Councilmember Chart, Kuchardi, you got a good of the order?
Well, we skipped over the second citizens comments.
Oh, we did.
But I do have for good of the order, but I'll wait.
Okay. All right. So Brandy, do we have any citizens wanting to provide comment?
We have one member in the attendee section, which is Jackie Brown, which I'm assuming is the city employee.
She is.
Other than that, that's all we have.
Okay. Does Jackie want to provide public comment?
And she can speak if she is.
Jackie, do you have anything to share this evening?
No, other than I had computer issues during the transportation meeting. So missed part of that and only recently got signed back in. So. But my computer's working now. That's a good thing.
We did talk about you earlier. When questions came up about the foster program and that you can't retire until you resolve that. So.
Oh, did any, does anyone have questions about foster that you would like to know?
At a high level, because I know it's a complex issue, you could, councilmember Rosebith, he was asking about it. So if you have anything to share. It was councilmember Deener. Okay. It was a council member.
Okay, certainly. What was your question?
What was the question?
Well, my question was kind of what is the state of foster as we know it today? I know it's affecting everybody, but. It was sort of a high flyover.
Okay. Well, as far as foster in general, we haven't gotten word yet that they have renewed the, the, the. Task force, but the word on the street is that it's going to absolutely be renewed because none of the fosters have been able to submit yet. Did you, were you talking in general or about Port Orchard's program?
In general.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
Councilmore Kuchardi, and you're good of the order.
Yeah, it's just an announcement for the public that might be watching the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance has their annual meeting this Thursday, March 25th, 3:00 PM. It's a free this year, this year, it's all electronics. If you went to their website, you could register if interested.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I'd like to take time to thank the mayor and the council for standing up the transportation committee. It's been enlightening and I'd also like to thank Mark and Chris. Because as you can figure out, as I keep saying this over and over again, we've got a great. Start with the tip, but you know, we don't have all the funds. So the selection of projects is extremely crucial to the city. So thank you for standing at the committee. It's helping a lot.
And I, and I guess on that, I'd like to, Jay, I'd like to thank our, our adopted public works staff member, Nick Bond. He puts a lot of time and effort into coordinating the planning side of transportation and it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you, Nick. Sorry I left you out.
And we got very close to hiring, we made an offer to what we thought was the perfect. Entry level engineering candidate and he worked at another city. entry-level engineering candidate and he worked at another city and the other city mayorman offer couldn't refuse to stay. So we're back to square one. So and Ian, Ian is out on, he's working two days a week. He's on on his maternity leave. So we're stretched pretty thin over there in Public Works right now. Somebody else, Councilmember Deener, was that you that raised your hand?
Yeah, just good of the order. I will be gone. I'm planning on being gone this, the next two council meetings, the sixth and the thirteenth.
Okay. Sure, Brandy will get you added to be excused. And that for personal reasons or business reasons?
That's for personal reasons. Spring break.
Don't go down to Miami.
My kids are too young for that.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Well, it's eight o'clock. It's one hour sooner than I thought we'd be done tonight. So good work, Mr. Dorsey, being brief in your comments.
Thank you.
All right. We'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, everybody.